Mission of the City of Pahokee, special meeting Monday, November 28, 2022 to order at 6:10 PM. Four- 14:00 PM, sir. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come before you today, oh God, to do the business of the city. God, we ask you to give us guidance and understanding, lead us and guide us, oh God, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Acting City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, staff, and thank each of our residents for being here this afternoon to participate in our special meeting of Monday, November 28, 2022. I apologize for incorrectly stating the time. It was like, say, 4:40 PM when we got started. This is a special meeting. We have two items on our agenda that will be covered today and at this time. First is a resolution, Resolution 2022-62. Is the City Attorney on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If you could read the resolution into the minutes.
Yes, sir. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida approving budget amendment number three in the amount of $753,000 for fiscal year 2021, 2022, attached here to Exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager. Could you give us a brief explanation of Resolution 2022-62?
You okay, Vice? Yes, sir. This is a resolution to amend our budget from eight million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine forty-four. Well, from, yeah, nine million, one hundred fifty thousand, nine forty-four to eight million, three hundred ninety-seven dollar, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred forty-four. That's a difference of $753,000. We will be decreasing our general fund by $125,000. Our capital project fund by $168,000. The explanation here will be, a better explanation will be given by our financial consultant, Susan Gooding Libberett, who will have additional PowerPoints to discuss this item with the City Commission.
Good evening, good afternoon, no, it's not after six o'clock. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk, and members of the audience. I am Susan Gooding Libberett, your financial consultant. So, if the PowerPoint is up. So, as was stated, you will see, I will go through the detail of the PowerPoint. Next slide, please. So, this is the FY 2022 final budget amendment, annual end-of-year budget amendment. Per statute, per state statute, all amendment must be adopted within 60 days following the end of the fiscal year. And the city's fiscal year ended September 30, 2022. We have until November 30, 2022 to do any final amendment. The City Manager wishes to amend in the following manner. Next slide, please. General fund. We are decreasing other miscellaneous revenue by $125,000. Due to that miscellaneous item, it's not coming in lower than we projected. And we are also decreasing, so therefore, if we decrease revenue, we have to also decrease expenditures. And these are the following categories where we are decreasing the expenditures. On the part-time salary line by $56,000, in the promotional activity line by $20,000, and in regular salary line by $49,000 for the expenditure reduction of $125 also. Further on, in your detail of your backup, I think you will see it not on the PowerPoint, but it tells you exactly what department those reductions were coming from. The general fund, part-time salary was in the Parks Department, 572-000. Promotional activity was in the Economic Development. And the part-time, regular salary was in 541. I think this was, it's not on the slide, but it was in your original backup that was provided, to tell you exactly where it's coming from. Next slide, please. So, the next slide, if you go to the PowerPoint, it will come from the Capital Project Fund, Fund 330.
But isn't this not it? Oh, we can go through it then, if this is it. If this is it, can we continue going through it?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. You could, that detail, I want you guys to look at the general fund, just so you can see what departments it was coming from and what line item reductions were coming from, okay? I think the second slide, which is also on this commission, Vice Mayor, is coming up. Thank you so much. Thank you. Capital Project Fund, 330. We are reducing the revenue for the stormwater grant revenue by $628,000. I think it was misspoken by the City Manager, he said 128, but it's 628 due to less-than-anticipated revenue and the grants coming in. And we are also, if we decrease our revenue, we have to decrease the expenditure. And we are decreasing the expenditure by the same amount, $628,000, because that grant did not materialize. So, 628 and then the 125, that's your total budget amendment of $753,000. Next slide, please. The City Manager wishes to do this final budget amendment. And it's always a good chance to do your final budget amendment before your audit. If you have revenue that has not materialized, or you have expenditure that has not been expended, it's good to amend your budget so that you may not receive a finding from the potential, your auditor, your external auditor. So, this is the reason why this is, you have a final budget for FY '22 amended. Any questions? I really can entertain.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, you're saying that in the capital projects, the storm drain grant, that it was decreased by $628,000 that we did not receive?
We budgeted, we budgeted $750,000 for that particular grant to come in. And if I'm correct, I think you have your grant project manager here. I think those are based on a reimbursement basis, sir. So, if no expenditure, then we cannot get reimbursement. So, if you want to address that to your capital project manager, that's good. So, yes, we are reducing it by 628, but we budgeted $750,000, and none of it has come in.
Okay. Decreased to less-than-anticipated revenue in grants?
Yes.
We didn't know how much we were gonna get from the grant?
You have a grant that has been awarded, however, if the grant-
How much was the grant awarded for?
You have to ask.
$750,000, this is the Eastlake Village Grant, the one that wasn't actually carried through. So, all they're doing is transferring the money back into this current budget. We, the Eastlake, you've been out there, we all been out there, you know, that grant, the work stopped before it really got started, but that's why the amount is the way it is, the amount.
So, so, the difference between the 750 and the 628 is what we have already paid ReoBach?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So, the difference between that is what was paid to ReoBach and ReoBach, as well as MDO. And so, as Ms. Susan said, because the grant is reimbursable, we still have to account for that money. We do not get all those funds upfront. So, that is why, and during that period of last year, no, no work was being completed or done. So, nothing happened, so there was no money expended or reimbursed. So, it was just land dormant.
Okay, so, so, this is why did that, we don't get it until we send in the bill?
Correct. You have to spend the money first, and they will reimburse us.
So, so, the difference, we should have it, right?
So, no.
We pay ReoBach and-
No, so, there was no project manager to do the reimbursement, so that money still has not come back in yet. So, the entire few months that I was not in the position, no one was there doing the reimbursement. So, now, that is the part that I'm working on, submitting reimbursement, getting it back in. And so, last commission meeting, when I spoke about those cost differences from the project that I need the contractor to submit to us, all that is inclusive of that.
Okay, well, I mean-
So, we haven't gotten those funds back from FDEP as of yet.
So, so, when they turn in the work orders, we pay it before we get, before we get reimbursed?
Yes, ma'am, we have to pay that. It's the same as with FDOT and FDEP projects or any funds that we get, they are reimbursable grants. We do not get those funds unless that grant stipulates that we will be allocated that money upfront. But all of our projects are reimbursable.
Yeah, I understand that, but we pay the contractor before we get the money from, from-
Yes, ma'am, we have to show contractor has been paid, we have to get a cancel check and submit that cancel check in.
Is that the way that, is that because a grant was written that way?
That is because that, that is not a typical grant, that is a legislative request. And that is how DP, FDEO, their, their funding is, F dot. They are reimbursed. Any grant that is reimbursable, stipulated as reimbursable, that's how they will all work. Regardless of who the funder is, that's how they work.
Okay, so, this means that, that you took out that $628,000 that we have not spent or, or had the work been done for, right? We took that out of the '22 budget. So, how is it reflected on the '23 budget?
You have '23 budget in front of you right now? I don't have that in front of me. But if you go to the '23 budget, you should be able to see it in the Capital Project. And go to Fund 330. Anybody have, you guys have that?
No, it's not the page, it's the, it's the line, I'm 330. Yes, Sarah, it's not it.
She looking at 2023.
Yeah.
And then as opposed to being the '23 budget?
You have your '23 budget with you, Commissioner, is that what you're looking at?
I guess this is it.
Would you like me, would you like me to help you?
If you would.
So, Commissioner Perez, so, the question you have is just the difference in the $750,000 and the $688,000. So, that's $122,000, which is in your supporting documentation in your green binder. So, while you were gone, Ms. Adams, they spent $122,000 last year. And so, they're just moving forward the difference of the $688,000.
Six twenty-eight. Six twenty-eight, you said six eighty-eight.
Okay, I hear that storm drains amended budget 750, adopted budget 750.
Yeah, that's what he said. Because that was the project amount, that was the original budget amount.
But you're not supposed to put the original budget-
So, so, let me, let me explain that to you, Commissioner. So, out of the 628, that 628 will roll forward to FY 2023, along with what is also anticipated for 2023. So, she's anticipating another $122,000 for FY '23 from the same, is it FDEP? So, you add those two together, it comes back to $750,000. So, everything, every year that we budget, that we anticipate getting that revenue, if the project does not move forward, then we have to say, okay, we are not gonna get 750. So, what are we, what have we expended so far that we know we're gonna get reimbursed for? And it's a reimbursable grant, it means we have to spend the money, we have to pay the vendor, and then show proof to the grantor that we have expended this money. That's the only way we're gonna get reimbursed. So, 628 will move forward to FY '23. We are also anticipating that we will also get some more grant for a total of 700, another 750,000. And that will go forward to-
That's not another grant we're gonna get, that's, that's the money that we pay that we're gonna get reimbursed.
You're gonna get the, the $122,000 less of the 750. As Ms. John Julian stated, we have already expended that. So, when she prepares the reimbursement, that will go in at your year end as revenue for $122,000. So, when you, to finish your final audit, you will see $122,000 as revenue. It doesn't mean that the money came in, it means that she has expenditure to prove, and she will ask the grantor to then reimburse the city that. We have already expended the money, we are due that money, so we will record that revenue, that grant. So, that's why the 628 will move to another year. And it will continue moving until all of the grant money is spent. It may take you five years, if the, it may take, but as long as there's remaining portion of that grant, it will continue to move from year to year to year, because this is a reimbursable grant. You only get back what you spent. If you didn't spend it, then you have to keep going for the next year.
Yeah.
Okay? I hope, you get, you understand?
Yeah, I'm quite aware of that. I was just, you said until another grant that we're gonna get, we're not getting another grant. It's reimbursement for what we have spent.
No, another grant won't replace that grant, right?
That grant would not be-
If we get another grant, it'll be for, it'll be for an addition, but it'll be something else. So, and also, keep in mind, remember when I said about the increase in cost? That increase in cost for material and all of that, material and all of that will affect that $750,000. So, we may have to spend more than what will cover what we were, was allocated from FDEP.
And that could be another grant.
That, that, yeah, I don't, I, that I don't understand it, I don't understand.
Well, materials goes up, so, from what their budget is 750, but this year, it might be 795 or whatever, because materials don't went up since since-
You can't do that.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna have to find money from somewhere, she's saying, to put along with this 750 to complete the project.
But you shouldn't have to do that, because when you do a grant, that's what it is, no matter what.
We're not, Sarah, you're not understanding, the grant is still the 750,000. But when they go in and do the 750, 750 now, where materials were $2 back three years ago, look at your gas price, where it was 299, now it's 346. So, now, you're gonna have to make a difference of that cost, whether it's gonna cost more.
When was that grant supposed to be completed?
Well, that's neither here nor there, Sarah, it's just-
It is here and there, because if they had completed in time-
Come on, Mayor, Mayor, this is just a budget amendment, we shouldn't be here in a 10 hours budget amendment, going out.
Y'all just afraid of discussing-
It's not afraid, but she just went over it with you, Sarah.
Commissioner-
That's not how grants work.
Commissioner, if I may, okay? So, even if the project was completed last year or this year, no one was in the seat last year. So, it would have not have been closed out, because the grant has to be properly closed out. So, even if it was completed this, last year, it would have to be closed out this year. You would still be waiting on reimbursement.
Yeah, but not increasing costs.
So, and also, in reference to increasing costs, so, with the cost, if costs have escalated over what we, the, the, I'm going to change the wording, allocated, legislative allocation, okay? So, if the amount goes over by $40,000, we are responsible for those costs. That is where making sure that we have contingency and those funds set aside so that we, regardless, on any project that we do, contingency has to be placed there, because you have to remember that, as, as Vice Mayor said, costs go up, we have to plan for that, regardless of what the conditions are. And so, that affects our budget, and looking at how we set aside our money and making sure that, regardless of whether it's a grant, legislative allocation, donations, those funds have to be set aside. So, either case, if it's $40,000-
Grant, we had like two, over two hundred thousand dollars for contingency. Cause we had seven fifty and they gave their quarter five hundred in their, in their bid. So there's two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars there.
Less than two hundred thousand, cause you have an engineer with costs engineer of eighty-four thousand. That, that engineering cost was eighty-four thousand. So when you speak of five fifty-four, five fifty-six plus the twenty-eight, you're at, do math, that's about six, seven, almost a little bit over, what, six thirty? So we still have that cushion, but you also have to remember that costs have, will escalate and that still affects our, our budget at some point.
The costs, but the costs escalated because the project still has not been done and that wasn't the original, uh, date of, of completion.
But Sarah, she just explained you had one year, no one in the office for a year straight. There was no one there to do the project. So what if it was laying dormant?
But if it was completed, there should not be any.
It couldn't have been completed when no one was there to complete the job.
I know, cause they left.
No, they got fired.
They got fired.
Basically what, what we're saying, we lost a whole. We, we lost a whole year, Commissioner Perez.
Mayor, this is not the meaningful. This, we doing a budget amendment.
We was already behind proudly there.
They were fired because as soon as, as soon as Ms. Adams left. And I have proof of it. So how, who fired them? Who fired them and why?
Okay.
And why wasn't ever discussed here that they were fired?
We're, we're gonna stick to the topic. The topic wasn't firing, so maybe I just misspoke on that moment. Uh, we're gonna move on. We're gonna make sure that the commission get chance to ask whatever question they have, get those answers done so we can move to either reject or approve.
We're gonna slip under the table. Okay, let's keep going. Let's go on the, on the, on the salaries. Okay? So you decreasing, uh, decreased miscellaneous revenue because, uh, coming in lower than projected. So for part-time salaries, you got fifty-six thousand dollars less than what you projected, we projected that we were going to receive.
Correct. I think in, if, um, I'm not sure if it has that. There was two budget amendment to F Y twenty-twenty-two. This is your third one. I think in the second one, there were increases to part-time salary, increases to promotional activity, increases to the same line item that I'm decreasing. And they were like, they estimated that they will get part-time people to come in and work. They estimate you're going to do this particular activity. However, as we closed out F Y twenty-twenty-two, those expenditure did not materialize. They came in less than projected. So therefore, the only line item to go to, to reduce this particular amount was these three line items in these three different departments.
And, and so.
And that's a good thing, Commissioner. You budgeted a, a certain amount and you came in under the budget. That's a very good thing. You want to come in under your budget with expenditure, but you want to come in over your budget with revenues. So this is a good thing by not, not spending this money.
But you said that the money didn't, didn't come in.
That's what I'm trying to say. The expenditure did not. So the material, the other miscellaneous, we budgeted two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in that particular line item. We didn't get any revenue.
You decreased the expenditure, but you decreased the revenue.
Yeah, because the revenue didn't come in. We didn't get the revenue.
Okay, so where, how do we, uh?
It's other miscellaneous revenue includes like insurance reimbursement, um, like if someone sells a particular asset and you get money, some unforeseen thing just happened. Um, that's why it's in other miscellaneous revenue. Those did not, we, we anticipated that much and it did not materialize. So that was the line item that I, I reduced.
So, um, how much money do we have in the reserve?
I, I don't have that in front of me, right? Reserve of what? Reserve of the general fund? Reserve of the, all of the other funds? A reserve of what?
There, I, I imagine is the general fund. The reserve that we have for catastrophic or emergencies.
I don't have, if someone could pull up the city audited financial statement and it will show what we closed out F Y twenty-twenty with. And that's why it's very important, Commissioner, and I want you guys to understand this, that every year when you finish your fiscal year and the budget is closed, that you do an audit and you do the audit timely so then you can actually know what's in your reserve. We have not done F Y twenty-twenty-one audit yet. I cannot speak to say this is in your reserve. That was really speaking like in a crystal ball. Because until you finish your F Y twenty-twenty-one audit, you do not know what is on your, in your, on your reserve, your unrestricted reserve that you can spend from. So that's why it's critical that you do your audit on a timely basis. We are two years behind. We are operating in F Y twenty-twenty-three. We are just closing out twenty-twenty-two.
So let me ask, let me ask you this. How long have you been doing work for the city? The finances for the city?
I started doing it in two thousand nineteen. And guess what year I was doing the audit for? Twenty seventeen.
Okay, in nineteen, in nineteen you were doing twenty seventeen?
Twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And we just finished twenty-twenty audit before, you know, the change.
And what year you started in, two, twenty fifteen?
Nineteen. I said, twenty nineteen, man. That's when I came in. You were two years behind. You were two years behind and you're still two years behind.
So, so you haven't been able to catch up?
Absolutely not, because guess what? When last year, twenty twenty-one, when we were, we finished the twenty-twenty audit and I said, we can finish the twenty twenty-one audit. You had no one sitting there. You changed consultant. No one, I'm not blaming anyone, but that was first number one priority.
Consultant, we're consultant, we changed.
Then you have to ask your city manager, okay? That was first number priority. I said the audit needs to be completed in twenty twenty-one.
He wasn't here.
You know, we brought in Lynn.
Lynn was here what, two, three months, so we're consultant because Susan was still here.
No, I was not here. I was definitely, Lynn took seat here. I may have come to answer question or help the department, but I was not getting paid. Your, that consultant was what you had on the books. It was not me. If they asked me a question, Miss Susan, come, I would be here. Okay, I'm just trying to say, your audit is what is important, Commissioner, and I want everyone to understand that.
I understand the audit is important, but I also understand that I want, I want clarity on the audit cause you know, it's, it's irresponsible to bring up, to bring a budget to us to vote on that just has category by title and it has amount.
Commissioner.
This, this, and we asked for it when it happened, when, when we did it. And your answer was you'll have it by Friday. Well, we never got it. And, and then the city manager just said, oh, it's in the, it's in the website. It would have been nice since we all requested it, that as soon as it was done, that it would have been emailed to us or printed and printed in a font that, that, you know, even with glasses, even with glasses, it's hard to read, cause I struggle to read this, you know?
You know, I, I really don't like to respond to certain things that I just don't have any control over. Um, at the time that budget, F Y twenty-three was done, that budget was done. That budget was done and should have been provided. It was provided.
That was prepared?
That was there. It was, was done.
That Lynn was working on, cause it's not the same one.
I have no idea. I cannot speak on something that I did not prepare. I really cannot speak on something. And I'm gonna tell you something, Commissioner.
Mayor, come on, Mayor. We're here for.
Commissioner, it's one and the same. Why are you mudding the waters?
Budget amendment, Mayor. Come on.
No, it's not the, you know what?
I can only speak.
You're mudding the waters and I don't know who's advising you, but it's not.
Advising me. You don't think that I'm smart enough to look at this and see what, what it is? I mean, why? Why do you bring us?
Because at the last meeting.
That don't have line item.
Hold on, at the last meeting, by your own words, your own mouth, you said you had went to another financial person. You, you brought it up. Nobody, nobody, nobody said, nobody asked you. You volunteered. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, and I stand, I stand behind it.
So Lynn was very clear when she said she was working towards the twenty-three.
Yeah.
She, she said that, she, she even had, uh, email that I shared with you guys, the email in which she said she was, we were behind two years. Still the same working thing. It is what it is. I, I, I don't know how you lost that in translation.
Are, are there any additional questions from other commissioners? We're gonna give everyone an opportunity.
You know that no one else has questions?
Well, if they don't, we're gonna move on.
Yeah, well, go ahead. Move on. Uh, and you could take the seat, cause everybody wants to go. Everybody's in a hurry. I just want everyone that's listening to know how we rushed through this budget, how my answers, you know, make everybody uncomfortable, how they don't really, you know, I get false information.
Okay, we're, we're moving on, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Mayor Bep, if I may, if you could please clear that up. It's not that we don't ask question. This budget was out since, I'm not mistaken, since June. Um, if I'm, if I'm not, and I'm every.
Each and every one of you understand that.
Every day.
Commissioner Perez has allowed her to speak.
Every day that any question that you may have, Susan is by telephone that she answered the questions. Lucas is in the office every day to answer questions. Lynn was there that you could ask questions, they to, on, on, get your understanding. So, but we need to stop as a city trying to say that we're hiding information, not asking information. Maybe some might not understand and others understand, but you, you might not be in the office when I call or, or come by, but I'm, I guarantee you, these other commissions had questions and got understanding. But we not have the other sit in a, this is a budget amendment, that money that was, wasn't used, putting back in the budget. That's all it is. That's all. It's just a budget amendment. The, the, these, these figures, you talked about these figures when we was going over the budget. These the same figures. These the same figures. For nine years I've been up here, I, I pretty much know how to read a budget.
Commissioner, each Commissioner, before speaking, please be acknowledged by the chair. You're interrupting someone who's speaking. We've had this resolution properly explained by a city manager and properly read into the minutes by our city attorney and properly given a explanation by our financial consultant. What is your pleasure?
What's the resolution?
I'm talking about a motion to either move it forward or not.
Mayor, there, I move that we will accept resolution twenty, twenty-two dash sixty-two.
I second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bowden for the acceptance and adoption of resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-two. Call for questions.
Are we gonna continue without a financial director?
We have a motion on the floor. I mean, that doesn't.
I have a question.
No, that's not a question pertaining to the motion itself. You can ask that. You're gonna have an opportunity to help.
Financial director for years. Why? There's plenty of people that have applied. There's plenty of people that are qualified. Financial director.
This is not the right, you have an opportunity to make comments after this proceeding on this particular resolution. In addition to question, her and none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Bep?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners.
How do you know, how do you know?
Majority four to one vote.
If you get fined, don't prove it, bud.
Now we'll move to the discussion, comments, concerns of the city commission. And I'll start with you, Commissioner Perez, so you can interject any comments or concerns you have.
My question to the city manager, why have we not even had any interviews for either one of the positions that we critically according to, you know, everybody that we need? We, we definitely had, had, uh, uh, people that have applied, people that are qualified, but they have not even been called in for interview. Because I'm tired of hearing the excuse that we didn't have personnel, that we don't have a financial director, that we don't have a grant writer, that we don't have this, we don't have that. But yet we have a city manager, a deputy city manager, a secretary to the city manager. We have plenty, plenty of people. We have a director of works that supervises all the directors and then we have all the directors. We have plenty of money going out, nothing coming in. But yet nothing's clarified because lord have behold, we don't have the personnel. What is stopping this from going on?
We advertise, we, we take in applications and they don't meet the minimum requirements that we have set.
I'm sorry, sir, but I, I disagree with a master degree. I think qualifies for the job.
Just because a person has a master's degree doesn't mean they have experience. Can I finish? Can I finish?
Yes.
When you put on what you need, okay, when you hire somebody and you want X experience, just because they have ten degrees doesn't mean they have the experience you're seeking.
If they have a degree on what I'm seeking, I think they qualify at least, at least I hold them an interview. Especially if I've been looking for one for three years, sooner or later, I'm gonna have to work with what I got. And I think a master's degree, you know, would qualify somebody for a job. And I know, I know both position and I know people that have qualified for each one of them with master's degree. And yet, all they got was an email acknowledgement. We have your email. We've received your application. That's it. Why?
Mayor, in a special meeting, is this discussion, you could do a special meeting? This is a special meeting for one time.
You throw out there, people. Do you have names?
Yes, I do have names.
Since you, since you wanna go there, do you have names?
Yes, I do have names.
Mr. Lucas, that's a, that's a day-to-day operation, um, um, topic. Um, but I'm thinking, this is a special meeting. The special meeting was called, the special meeting was called to do the, um, budget amendment.
You're not gonna get me to quiet up with your, with your day-to-day, because if anybody does day-to-day more than you.
Name it.
Yeah. You're in it every day. Every day talking to women.
You see me in it? When?
Commissioner Perez, Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin, we're not gonna be going back and forth up here with comments. We're gonna move on. We're gonna allow, and we have allowed, Commissioner Perez to at least give her comments or concerns. So we're gonna move it on so we can adjourn this meeting. And I'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
Just a comment, Mayor, that we as a commission need to learn how to be a commissioner. Many, if they always want to do a workshop, maybe the workshop need to be a one-on-one on how to be a commissioner instead of, and, and no protocol. That's what we need to learn. Learn what protocol is. Learn what, what you can and cannot do. That's cause you carry the title of a commission. Don't mean you butt in and do any, everything that you want to do. So maybe we need a workshop or maybe we need some classes on, one-on-one on how to teach you how to be a commissioner. Maybe that's what some of our commissioners here need. But, um, I'm, I'm talking, so maybe, and learn, and learn your day-to-day operations of the scope of municipal, municipal government. That's what they need to learn. What is municipal government? And that's what, that's what we need to learn. That's just a comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowden?
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Oh, sir.
Thank you. Just as a quick announcement, we'll be having our Veteran Day program on tomorrow from three, from twelve to three. They're gonna start off on the top of the dike by the flagpoles. And then after that, uh, program, we're gonna honor our veterans with a luncheon. So all veterans are invited to their luncheon and their spouses for the luncheon portion. Uh, we also as a commission will be attending the Florida League of City Legislative Conference in Orlando. We also, as a commission, will be attending the Florida League of City Legislative Conference in Orlando beginning on Wednesday through Friday. And that's a quick announcement, that's all my announcement, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our special meeting.
So move, Mary.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adjournment of our special meeting. Call for questions, her and none, are you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bev?
Yes, meeting adjourned, thank you.